Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, Mayor.
It's 3:00 and we are calling the meeting to order. Let the record show that we're waiting on Councilwoman Cobb. She is here. We're just waiting on her to come to the dais. And Councilmember Segarra is not here. And Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem Adams is on Zoom. And Councilmember Solomon is en route. So we need a fourth person to start the meeting. Okay, she's here. All right, we're going to call this.
Yes, ma'am.
We're going to call the meeting to order. We will have invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Gonzalez. Would you all, Mr. Reed, Jim Reed, would you please give us the honor during the invocation?
Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. And Councilwoman Cobb, I mean Gonzalez, please stand as he approaches. You have to do it, I'm sorry, sir. I apologize for that, but thank you so much.
If you would join me in bowing our heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the blessings you have showered on the central Texas region. You know, we are blessed to be live in central Texas, blessed to live in this great city of Colleen. We're probably blessed to the point where we should be more embarrassed and more honored than we give thanks to you every day. So let us all reflect on that today. Thank you for these people who give their time and their talents to do the work of this city. Thank you for the men and women who protect us both home and abroad so that we can gather in assemblies like this. And we ask all these things and all these blessings in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much, Mr. Reed from Central Texas Council of Governments and Councilwoman Gonzalez. It's always good to see Chief Kim, our former police chief, in the audience. Sir. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Everest.
Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Kendrick.
Aye, sir.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. I got you, Councilmember, I mean, Councilmember Adams, Mayor Protem. Motion carries five to zero. Presentation. Councilwoman Cobb, could you join me up front? Madam Secretary.
PR 25022, Colleen Starr Award.
Thank you. It's always an honor to stand before you. This is one of the most important times, item that is placed on our agenda, and that is recognizing the significant contributions of those individuals that go beyond without asking them to go beyond and to serve in our community as a volunteer and to have such a tremendous impact on the lives that they touch. This month, recognition goes to Councilwoman Cobb. And would you please come up, ma'am? You can bring up your spouse, family, or friends if you would like. Right here. There, we can sit right there.
Okay.
That's fine, we can wait if that's what you'd like to do. It's your time. Yes, ma'am. And we truly love our veterans. So he can sit over here if you would like. Oh, he can come up here with us?
Right on.
Okay, all right. If y'all could come right here.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And it is my great, yes, sir. It is my great honor to have Councilwoman Cobb introduce and the individual she has recognized for the go, uh, goes, this, the Starr Award for this month.
Good evening. I'm excited today. Today, I'm honored to introduce Mrs. Sherri Kelly. She's a resident and a champion of compassion and community service in Colleen. For over five decades, Ms. Kelly has dedicated her life to uplifting those around her. Five decades. That was when I began doing politics and working for the city of Colleen. I met her at a National Night Out. That's been some time ago.
It's been a while.
It's been a while, and you never stop working. Your unwavering support for individuals facing challenges, whether through providing food, school supplies, or simply a listening ear, illustrates the boundaries, empathy, and commitment to our community, even calling me at 11, saying, "You're going over to get somebody," and for me to come. But we did learn in our Loma Vista meeting yesterday, we had a town hall, that we call our police and our persons who can come and do it. If you called me, you may be in trouble. Sherri's strength comes from her faith, reminding us all of resistance and love. Her work with the Keep Colleen Beautiful, her initiative exemplifies her dedication to creating a thriving environment for all residents. By partnering with various organizations and participating in key events like National Night Out, she has inspired many to give back. But you do it with a heart, and that really matters. When you have compassion, when we keep doing good, good comes back to us. We can never forget that. Today, we recognize you, Ms. Kelly, not only for your remarkable contributions, but also for being a beacon of hope in our community. It is with great pride that I present you the Starr Award. I think it even lights up. What do you see? Does it light?
Oh, my goodness.
It lights up, like you. You light up when you see your persons and your neighbors in Loma Vista. You're ready to go out. I'm glad Chief Lopez told you, like, "Call 911, call 911." Don't forget to do that. We recognize you, Ms. Kelly, not only for your remarkable contributions, but also for being a beacon of hope in our community. It is with great pride that I present you the Starr Award in recognition of your contribution and the way you volunteer to better our community. Please join me in recognizing Ms. Kelly for her commitment to service, service to your community, to your neighbors, to have that compassion in your heart for the people of Colleen. I want to give you this little volunteer opinion so you can hold. And everyone, meet Ms. Kelly.
I just want to say thank you. And without these ladies' here support at home, I don't think I would be able to do quite the job that this lady brags that I'm doing. I have a wonderful family and I have a great support system in Loma Vista, whether it's my neighbors' families, everybody kind of pitching in, watching out for each other, and letting us know when there's danger in the neighborhood, and that's really important. And just don't be afraid to love somebody and to include them in your life. Make a little room count. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cobb, for recognizing an extraordinary person in our community for the Starr Award. Well deserved. We will now go into our work session, discuss items, agenda items two through 18 for the September 16, 2025 regular meeting session. No final actions until regular section. Madam Secretary.
MN 25023, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of August 19, 2025. RS 25145, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment reports for the quarter ended June 30, 2025.
Thank you. Mrs. Tanglin. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. According to the financial governance policy, we are required to provide, present a quarterly report for investments. And today, Mr. Grover is here to give that presentation.
Good afternoon, sir. Good to see you here.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Hard to believe we have another quarter under our belts.
Yes, sir.
All right. So we just spoke a little bit ago about some of the current events, so just keeping it more timely here. This week, we're actually, the Fed, Federal Reserve is meeting, so very timely as far as current events goes. The Federal Reserve has not done any rate cuts this year, so essentially have left rates unchanged since they cut rates a full percent last year. Ironically, they didn't do anything last year until September. So we're kind of repeating the same patterns that we did last year up to this point. Right now, we expect the Fed to cut a quarter percent at a minimum tomorrow. So what that means is that all of our cash rates, overnight positions, are going to drop by about a quarter percent. If they go more, you can expect cash rates to fall with it. However, the markets kind of work ahead of themselves, and we've started to see interest rates from one year out to 10 years, already starting to reprice lower for future interest rates. So essentially, what we're buying today has already factored in that rate cut for tomorrow. So what we'll see is if the Fed decides to cut more than a quarter percent, you might see the markets react a little more aggressively and see yields drop a little more. You know, so what we've been talking about here over the last year or so, lengthening the portfolio, locking in interest rates, this has been very valuable because now that rates have already started to come down, the city's portfolio has been very well protected and insulated to that. This is some key observations from June. You know, so the main things here and talking about is really just the fact that, you know, it's ironic, back in May and June, you know, the Fed was very biased, that the labor market was still showing resiliency, it was strong, although inflation was coming down, they felt that there was no need to really cut interest rates. If you fast forward to today, that tune has changed significantly. We have last few months' reports, labor market, unemployment is starting to rise, not aggressively, but it's trending in the direction that they're a little more concerned with. And for that reason, they feel like now is the time to start cutting interest rates again at a gradual pace. And so by the end of the year, we are expecting the Fed to cut at least two to three times by the end of December. On the top right chart here, you'll see this is the expected Fed funds rate into the future. Essentially, what this is showing you, this is as of July, but the, on the very far side there, you can see, it's showing you a range of 3.7% to 3.8%. Today, the Fed funds rate is a 4.3. So that shows us that the markets are pricing in, that the Fed could cut up to, you know, a half a percent to three quarters of a percent by the end of the year. So key things for us as we go forward here, we're really wanting to continue to lock in interest income and rates for the portfolio. So if the Fed is going to embark on cutting interest rates into the end of this year and next year, we want to make sure we're locking in today's rates out as long as possible to protect ourselves from further rates going lower. Some of the key updates from a quarter over quarter, so from March to June, you can see the average yield in the portfolio was relatively unchanged. This is a big, important reason why we're trying to lock in interest rates, because when you lock into a fixed rate, you're not as, you know, sensitive to what the Federal Reserve is doing on a quarter-to-quarter basis. Looking at the actual portfolio, if it'll update. There we go. So looking at the actual portfolio, you're going to see us continuing to try to get more into that three-to-four, four-to-five-year area, but also monitoring the overnight cash portion. The city has big debt payments and overnight, you know, day-to-day payments that need to be met, so we're always going to make sure we have overnight cash on hand, as well as positioning funds inside of a year to help with liquidity needs. But as the, as the outlook on the interest rates continue to move lower, like I said, reinvestment focuses are going to be longer into that three-to-five-year portion. And I'll leave you with that. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Council? Sir, thank you once again for coming and to give us that update.
Of course.
Ms. Tanglin, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25146, consider a memorandum resolution approving the Colleen Arts Commission grant recommendations for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you. Oh, yes, ma'am. Ms. Tanglin.
Yes, thank you again. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This item is to, for the Colleen Arts Commission fiscal year 2026 grant awards. As some background, the Texas Tax Code 351, that's 101, hotel occupancy tax, requires hotel occupancy tax revenues to be spent in a manner that directly enhances and promotes tourism, the convention industry, and the hotel industry. It authorizes municipalities to allocate up to 15% of hotel occupancy tax collections for the arts. In total, for fiscal year 2026 grants to the arts allocation is $125,000 approved in the adopted budget for 2026. Just a little bit of the grant award process, they made on March 2nd and March 16. There was a notice of mandatory workshop published, then on March 21 and April 4, staff held a grant application workshop, and April 25, grant application was due. And then June 13, the Arts Commission evaluated the grant applications. And July 11, the Arts Commission reviewed our grant recommendations. The grant award recommendations are for five entities, Vivela Art Society for $76,000, the Arteceña en Cultura for $4,778, the Crossroads to Texas Quail Guild for $5,674, the Innovation Black Chambers of Commerce for $11,021, and the Songai Bamboo Root Association for $27,325, in total, $125,000. The recommendations that the City Council approved, the Arts Commission grant recommendations, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for that update, Council. I know y'all had the opportunity to look at your package, would you, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you. Council? Council? Oh, no, I know you didn't have a question. Yeah, we moved on. I would like to move RS-25-149 up. Mr. Reed is coming from out of town, and I would like for that to go before we get into the boards and commissions, because that will take a long time. I'm sorry, you got a question for who?
Uh, the Arts Commission.
Okay, well, we, yes, ma'am, we're not discuss, yes. All right, Madam Secretary, I'm moving up RS-25-149. Thank you, Council.
RS 25149, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a home investment partnerships subrecipient agreement with Central Texas Council of Governments to provide tenant-based rental assistance, TBRA, to eligible households in accordance with community development policies and procedures, and HUD Home TBRA program regulations in the amount of $500,000.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. MacMair.
Good afternoon. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development awards home investment partnerships to eligible communities. The city of Colleen is recognized by HUD as a PJ and receives home funds annually. HUD allows a PJ to subaward home funds to a subrecipient to carry out home activities. Eligible home activities include homeowner rehabilitation, homebuyer activities, rental housing, and the tenant-based rental assistance, also known as TBR. Each home activity must benefit a low-to-moderate-income household. TBR provides financial assistance to income-eligible households for rent security deposits and, under certain conditions, utility deposits. CITCOG, Central Texas Council of Governments, has experience in administering rental assistance programs, including the Housing Choice Voucher Program, also known as Section 8. CITCOG will target persons or families currently on its Section 8 waiting list. The household will be housed in a unit located within the city of Colleen. The amount of the agreement is $500,000, which includes direct assistance and project delivery costs up to $50,000. CITCOG will assist up to 20 households for up to 24 months to establish long-term housing stability by reducing the number of households that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, reduce the number of households at risk of eviction, providing supportive service and education for households' self-sufficiency, and increasing housing affordability for low-income households. Staff recommend City Council authorize the city manager who is designated to execute a home investment partnership, subrecipient agreement with CITCOG in the amount of $500,000.
Council, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Cobb.
My question was in reference to the grant, so I have no questions now.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. That's fine. All right, then, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, we can go back to agenda item five.
RS 25147, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to vacant, expired, and unexpired terms on various boards, commissions, and committees.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. The city of Colleen has various boards, commissions, and committees that serve an advisory capacity. Per the city codes of, code of ordinances, all appointments and reappointments to city boards, commissions, and committees shall be made by the city council prior to October 1st of each year for all positions to be filled that fiscal year. The following tables show members with expired terms, expiring terms, or resignations, and whether the members are term limited and have requested reappointment. So the first is the Animal Advisory Committee, and the subcommittee member is Mayor Protem Riosales Adams.
Yep, thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, I wish to go ahead and reappoint Lori Wilson as her past sister city manager, Amanda Moore as the Animal Services Director, Bill Paquette to fill one of the citizen rep, Brianna Rosales as the Animal Welfare Org rep. And I don't know if I can do this, but if pending acceptance by our part-time vet to appoint them to the licensed vet position. And that leaves one more, nominate Rachel Moffett to fill the other citizen rep.
Excuse me, the Council may have to pause until Mr. Everest come back. We only have three members on the dais.
Got it.
The council member meeting can resume. Did you get that?
If I may ask, if that question could be answered, if I can nominate the licensed vet being the current part-time vet that we have pending their acceptance, or do we have to bring this back?
To appoint someone, we need to make sure that they want to be appointed, would accept the appointment, so if there's something pending there, we can bring an item back.
Okay. Then the nominations, as previously stated, the two city employees, Brianna Rosales in the Animal Welfare Org rep, as the Animal Welfare Org rep, Bill Paquette, citizen rep, and Rachel Moffett as the other citizen rep.
Okay, thank you.
You can just continue.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have the Arts Commission, which are appointments made by all of Council.
Council, we have two positions. What is your recommendation? Councilwoman Cobb.
Madam Mayor, I would like to nominate Deborah Holcutt.
Deborah Holcutt.
For what position, ma'am?
At-large.
At-large member? Yes.
Okay. So the next one we have is dance, drama, and writing. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
And we had Ms. Verda Bell.
Will you speak up, please?
Ms. Verda Bell.
Did you get that? You got it? Okay.
There is another at-large member, Tremont Cannon. He did request reappointment.
Council, you okay with him getting reappointed? Okay. Please turn off all electronic devices. Oh, that's not true, you can continue.
Next, we have the Audit Committee, which is also all of Council. And these are both citizen reps.
Council, we have only one position open. Is it two?
It's two, Madam Mayor.
So term, no?
Mr. Ralston did request reappointment. Mr. McLaurin did not.
Okay. Do anyone have a recommendation from Mr. McLaw? Councilmember Kendrick. No, we understand reappoint him, but what about the other position? Do you have anyone? Anytime.
Would you like me to move on and we can circle back?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Next, we have the Board of Adjustment Aviation. The subcommittee members are Councilmember Cobb and Mayor Nash King. And there's one vacancy.
Ma'am, Council, with some of these that only have one applicant, we need to reopen them to the them to the public. Do everybody agree or not? I don't have my book, but evidently y'all want more options. Okay. Counselwoman Cobb, do you have, okay, you don't, okay, if it's only one applicant?
There are two applicants on file for this board. No, sir, it's not. It's only for the subcommittee members. Your binders are specific.
Whoever you choose, Counselwoman Cobb. I just want to be neutral. Even though I'm on the committees, I just want your counsel to decide.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Kadeen Spiller.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the Board of Adjustment Construction. The subcommittee members are Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Kendrick. To note, Stephen Reinhardt and Jarrett Herbie Holden are both currently serving on the board. The two of them will be moved to different unexpired positions on the board with council approval.
Councilmember Alvarez. Councilmember Kendrick.
I guess my question is, could we leave Mr. Reinhardt as the building inspector position and add Mr. Justin Martin as the general contractor?
You want to leave Mr. Reinhardt as the building inspector?
Yes.
And place Justin Martin as the general contractor?
Yes.
So what would you like to do with Mr. Holden?
Can he stay as mechanical?
Yes, sir. We can do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Next is the Board of Adjustment Fire Prevention Code. Subcommittee members are Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Kendrick.
Councilmember Kendrick. Is it, how many positions?
There are four vacancies. One of those terms did expire last year because we didn't have enough applicants on file to fill the positions.
Correct.
And so, we just have two applicants on file currently, so we still don't have enough applicants to fill all the positions.
Do you, Counselwoman Gonzalez?
Sir?
We're gonna, we're going, we're gonna pass on that one, and we discuss that offline.
Yes, sir. I meant, yes, ma'am. Board of Adjustment Zoning, the subcommittee members are Councilmember Alvarez and Mayor Nash King.
All of these that say that their term expires, but are they? You have one of them that can be reappointed. Mr. Frawley?
He, he requested reappointment, yes, sir.
Okay, and the other three did not?
That is correct. I did not, we did not have applications on file for those other three individuals.
Understood.
But there are applicants. They're all citizen reps.
So what is concerned? Councilmember Alvarez.
Well, my initial thought was to reappoint the four that are currently there. But it appears two or three of them did not request to be reappointed.
Okay.
Would you like me to come back?
Yeah, I would like to reappoint the four that are there, if we can, if they're willing to stay.
I cannot speak to if they're willing to stay in those positions or not, since they did not apply.
So we'll come back and counsel?
Come back to it.
Counselwoman, I mean, Councilmember Alvarez, you can call them, because we're gonna have to put them on another agenda anyway, anyway, and we'll just come back to those.
Yes, ma'am.
For time's sake.
Thank you.
Welcome, ma'am, thank you.
The Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, there are currently nine positions available for this committee. All of them, their terms expire at the same time, and so there are actually two slides for this committee. And there are four positions available. I mean, excuse me, nine positions available. Four on this slide, five on the next. And some individuals did request reappointment.
Could you name those, please?
Yes, ma'am. Sandra Wooton requested reappointment, Dylan Whitus, Patsy Bracy, Camille Francis Howard, and Angela Anne Santos.
Okay, thank you, counsel. We have five people that are willing to stay on, and if they're willing, if we got volunteers and they want to continue, that'd be great, but you also have the opportunity, if you have enough applications, to fill in four new positions. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with what your original statement was, that want to continue to keep them there, and I would also like to nominate Camille Francis Howard.
I think she, is she's not already on there?
She did request reappointment.
I apologize.
There's still four?
So?
Applicants?
There are still four vacancies, yes, that did not request reappointment.
Okay, counsel, if you do not have names at this time, we can table it. Okay, okay. Councilmember Alvarez, Counselwoman Cobb, table.
I did have one. I'm sorry, I missed them.
Yes, sir.
Damascus Ross.
Are y'all okay with Damascus Ross?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, so there's three left. There are no more reps. Counselwoman Cobb, you clicked. Do you have a recommendation? Thank you. Counselwoman Gonzalez.
Tracy Epting.
Will you repeat?
Tracy Epting?
Epting?
Epting, no, Epting.
Okay.
Tracy Epting.
Are y'all okay with that, counsel? All right, now we have two.
And there's still a vacancy for one of the real estate development and building industry, and another community representative.
Okay, so with the applications that you have, you can go ahead and do a community, and if there is a realtor representative, you can appoint that. Counselwoman Gonzalez, do you, are you finished, ma'am? No problem. Councilmember Kendrick.
I'd like to recommend Michael Boyd.
Councilmember Boyd will be in what position, a realtor, or is he gonna be a citizen?
It's a community rep.
Counsel, come on. Kendrick? Is he a citizen or the realtor?
The real estate.
Okay.
Okay.
We have one slot open for a citizen.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselman Alvarez.
I would put Chidi Emile for the last community rep position.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, are you okay with that? All right, thank you, Madam Secretary, for your patience. We're ready to move on.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, next is the Civil Service Commission. This selection is made by the city manager, and Mr. Kagle has selected Charles Kimball as the citizen representative.
Okay, Chief Kimball. I see you in the House. All right, counsel, Mr. Kagle has selected. Charles, that's okay. You came up in here. Charles Kimball. And let the record show that Councilmember Solomon is present. All right, yes, ma'am, we can move on.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, moving on to the Community Development Advisory Committee. There are four terms expiring. They are all citizen representatives. Ms. Cossey, Teresa Cossey, did request reappointment.
Okay, so therefore, we have four posi- three positions available?
If y'all would like to reappoint Ms. Cossey to her position. Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Anyone, yes, ma'am. Okay, counsel, this is Community Development Advisory Commission. Counselmember Kendrick.
I'll do Ronald Blackman.
Speak in the mic, sir.
Ronald Blackman.
Okay, we have two positions.
Madam Mayor?
Counselmember Gonzalez, and then I get to you.
Thank you, that's Tanisha Dix.
Okay. We have one now.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna need to stand small.
Okay. Counsel, are you okay with that? All right, thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Next is the Heritage Preservation Board, all of council for this appointment. These positions are specific. There were only two applicants on file.
Do they want to be reappointed, Mr. Dehart?
Neither individual wants to be reappointed.
Okay. The two applicants on file, do they qualify for these positions?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, well, we'll table that and move on.
Okay. Next, we have the Clean Economic Development Corporation. The Clean Industrial Foundation has nominated Curtis Gaines as a replacement for Tad Doro, and then the Clean Economic Development Corporation has nominated Scott Cosper to be reappointed for another term.
Okay, counsel, these positions are appointed by the individual organizations, so we really do not have a say on who they want to appoint.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, move on.
Next is the Clean Sister Cities. The Youth Advisory Representative will be determined once appointments are made to that commission, and then the Clean Chamber of Commerce has recommended Michelle Flores as the representative for Clean Sister Cities.
Okay.
So, the citizen representative is open, and there are applications on file.
Councilmember Solomon. Do you have, okay, Councilmember Kendrick, please speak into the mic.
Tamara Williams.
He recommends Tamara Williams. Are y'all okay, counsel? Do we have another recommendation? Okay, we're ready, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Next is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. These are for all of council to consider. There are four expirations coming up.
Madam Mayor? I will recognize you. Give me a minute. Would anyone like to stay on the committee, Madam Secretary?
Yes, ma'am. Joe Davis for position three in District Three.
Okay. All right, position one, Counselwoman Gonzalez, do you have a person?
Do. Michael Harris.
All right. At-large, Council, Mayor Proton?
Madam Mayor, I wish to nominate Dulcina West.
Okay. Councilmember, any council member we have at-large, do you have a recommendation? Councilmember Kendrick, is this a click, or you didn't click off? For time's sake, do we have a recommendation? Councilmember? Councilmember Kendrick?
Jennifer Law.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, sir?
Jennifer Law.
Counsel, are y'all okay with that? All right, Madam Secretary.
We have the Planning and Zoning Commission for all of council to appoint. There are three terms expiring. Mr. Ricky Wilson has requested reappointment for position four.
Okay, Councilmember Cobb.
I would like to nominate Mr. Bear Jones.
Mr. Bear Jones, and he will replace Mr. Louis Minor. Okay, and you said Ricky Wilson wants to stay?
Yes, ma'am, he requested reappointment.
So with planning and zoning, all positions will be changed out, just like we do all of us, if you're already down, planning, zoning, so we have two slots open. Councilmember Solomon.
Yes, I wanted to recommend Cooper.
Cooper who?
Cadice Cooper.
Okay, everybody okay with Cadice Cooper? Okay, we have one more, we have one more.
Are we not allowing Ricky Wilson to continue? I'm sorry, Mr.?
No, they said no. Counselwoman Gonzalez.
I'm gonna nominate Cedric Moss.
Who?
Cedric Moss.
Cedric Moss for planning and zoning.
To take Mr. Wilson's place?
Mr. Wilson.
Okay, and then I have Mr. Bear Jones for Mr. Minor's place, and Ms. Cooper for Mr. Plakelman's place.
Correct. Councilmember Alvarez, you okay with this? Councilwoman Cobb, you okay with this?
Okay.
Are you okay with it?
Yes.
Councilwoman Solomon, Councilman Solomon, are you okay with this?
Yes.
Councilman Kendrick, you okay with this?
Yes.
Counselwoman Cobb, you okay with this? Mayor Proton?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I want to make sure the planning and zoning is a very important commission, and they all agreed last year, if you're on there, your term up, we have to bring in new people.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. We have a subcommittee of Councilmember Cobb and Councilmember Solomon, and there are two expirations. Neither individual has requested reappointment.
Councilmember Cobb, I mean, I'm sorry, Solomon.
Yes, I'm trying to find the name that I, I'm sorry.
Can we come back to that one, because he haven't had the opportunities between him and Cobb, and I want him to find wherever he put his notes. But we are coming back to that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Before.
I'm flagging it. Next is the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board, Bobby Whitson. Bell County has chosen to reappoint home for another term.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And then, last but not least, is the Youth Advisory Commission, which is with a subcommittee of Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Segarra, and Councilmember Adams, and the nine individuals listed on the two slides were, I believe, interviewed and selected.
That is correct.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, counsel, since they were interviewed and selected, the council members that are on that subcommittee, that's who they chose, correct, Councilmember Alvarez? All right, so going back to Senior Citizens. Board, Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Cobb, you have two positions. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, my apologies. We want to recommend for senior citizen, senior advisory committee, Yvette. Now, she has about 14 letters in her name.
Yes, ma'am, I have made note. Yes, I, Ms.
Her first name is Yvette?
Yes, yes, sir. I, I under, yes, I have her.
And then, the second name that we recommend is Raymond Monaco?
Have they served on the committee before? Have they served on there before?
I don't believe they have.
Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, while he's looking that up, could you please tell us the committees that we table, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I answer, Mayor, on Raymond knows he has never served, and on Yvette, she has not served.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. I have that notated.
Okay.
Circling back, there is still a vacancy on the Audit Committee. The Board of Adjustment Zoning. The Heritage Preservation Board. And I believe that is it. So for the Board of Adjustment Zoning, there still are four vacancies. And I can pull that up. I just have to backtrack here. So those are the four individuals whose terms are expiring. Only one requested reappointment.
Okay, and we reappointed the one person.
You do want to reappoint Mr. Fraley.
Who was that?
Vantonio Fraley. He requested a reappointment.
Okay, well, Mr. Alvarez, that's the one he requested to wait on it. Okay, so we're not reappointing anybody then?
You're not going to reappoint. Okay, so those four vacancies will.
So, Mr. Kegel, for these vacancies, would you please open these applications back up again? Council, I are not ready to make a decision on the applicants that they have right now, that's their choice. And also put Colleen House in authority on that too. Would you open that back up?
Yes, ma'am.
Are y'all, yeah. Mr. Alvarez, you okay with that? Councilwoman Cobb, you okay with that? Councilmember Solomon, you okay with that? Councilmember Kendrick, you okay with that? Councilmember Gonzalez, you okay with that? Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. K, you have anything you want to say?
Yes, ma'am, just when would you like us to bring this back? You want us to wait two meetings, or?
Yes, sir, would you wait two meetings and get down? Bring it back in November, please.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Madam Secretary, is that, yeah?
Yes, ma'am, and then the only other board we would need to bring back aside from the Audit Committee would be, excuse me, the Heritage Preservation Board.
Okay.
For those two expiring terms.
Thank you, Mr. K, for opening that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Council, I'm very pleased on how we got through this. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. RS 25148, consider a memorandum resolution awarding RFP 2532 Aviation Fuel Supplier and authorizing an agreement with Av Fuel Corporation for fuel services at Colleen Regional Airport and Skylark Field in the amount of $340,000.
Madam Secretary, thank you for that. Good afternoon, no, Mr. Provost.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Before you, the Aviation Fuel Supply Agreement for the Colleen Regional Airport and Skylark Field. The City of Colleen Aviation Department is pursuing a contract with a common aviation fuel supplier to ensure secure, reliable, and uninterrupted fuel supply essential for aviation operations. This initiative seeks to enhance service quality while establishing a profitable agreement for the aviation fuel procurement. This strategic approach not only guarantees a consistent supply of aviation fuel, but also positions the city to benefit from competitive pricing and quality service in the aviation sector. Touchy today. A request for a proposal was advertised on June 23, 2025, and three proposals were received on July 30, 2025. Proposals submitted include Av Fuel Corporation, AEG Fields, and Titan Aviation Fields. Following a thorough assessment of all submissions, staff determined that Av Fuel Corporation's proposal meets our operational needs and provides the best value for the City of Colleen. Staff has negotiated an Aviation Fuel Supply Agreement with Av Fuel Corporation. The term of the agreement is for a period beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2027, with two one-year options. Aviation Fuel Supply Agreement provides goods which generates revenue for both the Colleen Regional Airport and Skylark Field through resale or contracted delivery to air operators. The contract is expected to generate approximately $541,724 in revenue, with an estimated expenses totaling $340,000. Additionally, the agreement includes additional value-added services at no extra cost, such as three fuel trucks, free regulatory training, quality control equipment, regulatory signage and stickers, and other cost-saving items. The recommendations for City Council approve the Aviation Fuel Supply Agreement with Av Fuel Corporation and authorize the City Manager or Designee to execute same as well as all, as well as any and all amendments and lease actions allowed per federal, state, and local law. Paying any questions?
Thank you, sir, there are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25150, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the renewal of a three-year Microsoft Enterprise Agreement in the amount of $1,884,699.
Thank you. Mr. Resto, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. So for the past three years, the City of Colleen has utilized the purchase of the Microsoft products through an enterprise agreement which expires at September 30 of 2025. This agreement allows for volume pricing, flexible licensing, software updates, and access to the most current update versions of products like Windows, Office 365, OneDrive, SharePoint, Teams, and our Microsoft Outlook, which is our email. The CDEA provides a foundation for its core infrastructure. So renewing the EA for a new three-year term ensures cost predictability, compliance and licensing requirements, and access to the Microsoft latest technology. It also allows the IT department to maintain critical security patches and updates, which are essential for protecting against cybersecurity threats and meeting compliance standards. SHI Government is a certified Microsoft partner, and its pricing is through the Texas DIR Contract, DIR CPO 5237. The annual cost of this three-year Microsoft agreement is $628,233,233. This is a budgeted item that we included in our forecasting for our budget. Staff recommends that the city authorize the City Manager or Designee to execute a contract for the procurement of a three-year Microsoft Enterprise Agreement from SHI Solutions, DIR Contract, CPO 5237, in the amount of $1,884,699. And the City Manager or Designee expressly authorized to execute any and all change orders, supplement agreements, and amounts set by state and local law. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Mr. Resto, thank you and your staff, not only for this, just ensuring that our systems are safe. Thank you so much for keeping us updated. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25151, consider a memorandum resolution approving a fireworks display application from Big Dog Pyro LLC on behalf of Advent Health Medical Center.
Chief Kobinski. I know I saw him earlier. Chief, I didn't want to go, I didn't want to leave without you, but you know, Chief Lopez was trying to get the mic, so I had to hold him back.
Mayor, I wanted to get his hopes up to give him an opportunity to try to be a fireman for a minute.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. This is our third year with this request for the Advent Health Fireworks Display. Section 11-6 of the Colleen Code of Ordinance provides that the City Council may permit use of fireworks for public display. The application requires a number of items that you see in your presentation. The application that was submitted did meet all of those requirements. Big Dog Pyro LLC submitted the application for the display on behalf of Advent Health Medical Center on August 6, and this is for a display for Breast Cancer Awareness Month kickoff event that takes place on September 25 of this year, from 8:15 to 8:45 p.m. It is at Advent Health Medical Center, and all the licensing, insurance, the site plan, storage, and the type of fireworks has been provided. Fire Marshal has reviewed the application. The submitted documentation has been approved by the Fire Marshal, and the Fire Department approval is contingent on weather conditions. We did go out to the site yesterday and inspect that site, made sure that the conditions have not changed. They have not. We are still recommending approval. And again, that is for September 25, 2025. At the time of the posting of the agenda, we are not recommending action, any action in order to assess the weather or drought, but we did inspect again that site on the 15th of September, giving formal recommendation tonight. Also letting you know that we will go out to the site again prior to the shoot and make sure that the conditions have not changed. And at any time, the Fire Marshal has the authority to stop the shoot if we do reach some drought conditions over the next 10 days that cause us any reason for concern. So it's our recommendation that we approve the permit request as presented by Big Dog Pyro this evening. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I'm not sure if you stated someone will be there on site during the fireworks display? Or not, I'm sorry.
That is correct. The Fire Marshal's office, so the approval of the permit is by City Council motion and direction. And then the Fire Marshal's office is out on site through the entire fireworks shoot. They inspect the site ahead of time, inspect the fireworks, work with the vendor, who is the same vendor that does the Fourth of July fireworks for the city, so they're a respected vendor. And then they stay on site through the completion of the shoot. Just for any misfired fireworks, they make sure those are taken care of, and then that's when the Fire Marshal's office leaves the scene.
Yes, sir. Advent Health is a great partner with the City of Colleen, and it is for worthy cause. Yes, all right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25152, consider a City Council Resolution of Support for an endorsement from the Texas Municipal League, TML, for Mayor Proton Ryakos Adams to fill a leadership role in the National League of Cities, NLC.
Thank you. Who item?
I guess. I guess I can.
Oh, you, oh, this is your item?
Uh, I can take it, Mayor.
But, yeah, is it, okay, you are Mr.
I didn't hear you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Council, this same as last year. TML started a process for any Texas elected official being nominated, or potentially being nominated to an NLC position, to get resolutional support from their local council before they consider. The ultimate decision for any appointments is the president of NLC.
Council, do you have any question?
And there's no extra cost or assumed cost in this case either.
Council, do you have any question? Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What, what position is this, do you consider?
The, well, this is for any leadership position. I'm currently in the Vice Chair of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. So to continue to serve in that position, the TML has either, will either endorse or not endorse.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25153, consider a memorandum resolution awarding RFP 2542 to Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas, BCBSTX, for an excess risk policy stop-loss insurance for medical and pharmacy claims under the City Health Insurance Plan effective October 1, 2025, in the amount of $1,356,969.
Madam Secretary, Mrs. McDaniel have item 11, 12, 13, and 14? I won't be calling on you once you finish. If Council don't have questions, just go to the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As stated, we're here tonight, or this afternoon, to discuss our stop-loss insurance renewal. The City Healthcare Benefit is a self-insured benefit platform, and therefore, the city must bid stop-loss insurance to protect the city from high medical claims. And in July of '25, the city utilized the request for bid to select a stop-loss insurance provider. Just a little background, what stop-loss does is protects the city from catastrophic or unpredictable losses due to high claimants. It's got both a specific and an aggregate coverage. The specific stop-loss coverage is when claims exceed $200,000, the stop-loss would kick in. And then the aggregate is kind of a moving target, as it's based on 125% of our predicted claims, which changes every 30 days. The city received bids from only one vendor, and that was Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, in the amount of $1,356,969. And therefore, our recommendation is to award that bid to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas effective October 1 for $1,356,969. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Would you be willing to go with them regardless if they were the only bid?
We've had a good track record with them so far, so I wouldn't hesitate, no.
Okay, thank you.
RS 25154, consider a memorandum resolution approving the appointment of an Assistant City Manager.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, again, good afternoon. Little bit of background, on September 2, so just two Tuesdays ago, the City Council approved an annual budget for FY '26, which included the addition of a second Assistant City Manager authorization. The City Manager has selected Mr. Jeff Reynolds as the City of Colleen's new Assistant City Manager. And Mr. Reynolds is the city's current Executive Director of Public Works. He's spent the entirety of his 10-plus years of public service with the City of Colleen. And he received his Bachelor's of Business Administration and Marketing Degree from Columbia Southern University, and holds various certifications with FEMA and the Department of Defense. And therefore, staff recommends the City Council approve the City Manager's appointment of Mr. Reynolds as the City of Colleen's new Assistant City Manager. And Mr. Reynolds is also here, if you had any questions for him.
Mr. Reynolds. Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. How are you doing, sir?
Madam Mayor, Council, doing well.
Good, 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 good. So there is a lot of communication that's going on in the public. A lot of criticism in reference to why do we need another Assistant City Manager? I, I think you are more than qualified with your credentials, and also, in my opinion, your leadership skill. But, but for, for peace of mind and for the residents, what makes you the person to feel that Assistant City Manager position? What do you bring to the table?
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a valid question and valid concerns from all those who are concerned about adding personnel. A little bit of background about me that you don't know is I spent a third of my career, my 21 years in Army here in Colleen at Fort Hood. So I have a connection to this area. I chose to come back here. I came here initially as an E4 Spec 4 in Army back in '93. Came back here, chose to be back here to be back with the 1st Cavalry Division in 2008, and chose this as my retirement home. Because I did want to bring my family back here. In 2005, while traveling through here, we lost our son here at Fort Hood. And that's, we have roots here. That's why we're back here. So I will always be here because my son is here. So I do have ties to Colleen. So if you ask me, why do I care about Colleen, why do I want to be here? I think that answers that question. I'm here because my son is here, and this is home for me now. Why do, what do I bring to the table? Been in Army for 21 years. I decided to join the Army immediately after high school. I was in basic training three weeks after graduation, because I had a hankering to serve. I wanted to serve. I didn't join Army because I wanted college money. I didn't join because I wanted to travel. I joined because I wanted to serve my country. Coming here to the City of Colleen and getting this job in 2014. Coming here to the City of Colleen and getting this job in 2014, it gave me another opportunity to serve in another capacity, right next to the place that I retired from, is Fort Hood. So to be able to serve this community, the 163,000 plus, as well as the 1,400-plus projected employees we're gonna have for FY 26, it's, it's, this is a great opportunity, and this City of Colleen has been my only municipal government experience. I came here as a manager of mowing and drainage. I worked my way up to be the assistant director of Public Works, also overseeing operations for solid waste for three years, and then moved up to executive director position, so I've been groomed for, for this day, I do believe. I've, I've worked hard to collaborate with all departments in the city, from police and fire to finance to HR, to every department in the city. I work with them alongside them, build relationships, build relationships in the community, community partner relationships. I believe that what I bring to the table is that, that, that level of leadership. In Army, we say leadership is the purpose, is providing purpose, direction, and motivation, and it's important that we do that. Why are we doing what we're doing? How are we gonna do it? And then providing the drive to accomplish that said mission. That's why, that's what I bring to the table. City manager is the chief executive officer. My job is, as well as Ms. Lawrence's job, is to support him in that role, making sure we're going out here and providing day-to-day operations, and anytime you have that many employees, 13 departments, it'd take more than one person, more than two people, to manage and provide adequate purpose, direction, and motivation to those departments, and that's what we gotta have. We gotta make sure we're being efficient, make sure we're providing the best possible service, not just to our citizens, but also to the 1,400 employees that call us family. We gotta provide that. Our motto is dedicated service every day to everyone. We can't do that if we're not properly staffed at every level. I think this position, adding this position, not because it's me, it could have been whoever, I would have been supportive of this position because the position is needed to provide that level of leadership to assist our city manager, who all of staff trust, and I trust 100% as well as this council, and I want to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. This is not something I would ever dream would happen, but to be here tonight, have the confidence of the city manager, you, this, this council, and the team, all the executive directors that come to me and endorse me in this position, I appreciate their support, but more importantly, I want to thank the employees who shoulders I stand on. I didn't get here because of the people in this room for the most part, I got here because of the employees that allowed me to be their leader for the last 12, 12 years. So with that being said, I'm here to serve in this capacity, and I'm ready to rock and roll.
Mr. Reynolds, I have known you when, the day one, when you start working for the City of Colleen. I was a volunteer all the way up to the position that you hold now.
Yes, ma'am.
And two qualities that they are without question. Your customer service is the best I've ever seen across the military and also in most municipalities, and two, your leadership. When I'm out there thinking I'm getting over by checking on your employees, you already been there, or I see you pulling up when I get there. You lead by example, and I thank you for your transparency. Because people don't know your story. Sometimes we just assume people just wake up one day and boom, here I am, but you started where the employees are at now, and you worked extremely hard to get where you are now, and I am so excited, I can't speak for the council, but I look forward to working with you as an assistant city manager. I think Mr. Cagle, thank you, and Ms. McDaniel, did an excellent job in your selection process, and more so, I like what you said, the other executive directors and employees support you, and I think that's the right person for the job, and thank you for telling the public who you are and what you bring to the table.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a couple of words. I had the pleasure of, of working with Mr. Reynolds during my tenure as an employee of the City of Colleen, so I've seen his, his, his work firsthand, his ability to enter a room and inspire camaraderie and team building. Everybody who knows Jeff knows he has a servant's heart, and he has that quality of a true leader. Everybody who, who, who has worked with Mr. Reynolds, I mean, it's evident in all their words of support. Any employee that I've talked to in the City of Colleen then and now has only ever had positive things to say about Mr. Reynolds. I know he makes us look good anytime that we have a resident with a concern. I know that if I put it in the hands of Mr. Reynolds, it's gonna get addressed, and not only that, he has that, that, those traits, those characteristics, and that bedside manner to, to hear the residents' concerns, and when they walk away and they come back to us, they tell us all the good things, and sometimes it may not have been the answer that they wanted to hear, but they're still happy when they walk away with, from their interaction with Mr. Reynolds, and that is a telltale sign of a leader. So I am honored and excited and proud to see you rise to this position.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, madam. Thank you for asking the question that you posed. It is a fair question, and congratulations, you know, should we decide to go this way. I'm extremely, I share the sentiment of my former council, our council member Alvarez and also Madam Mayor. You said that level of leadership, you make it look too easy, sir, and your word's too easy, but I am thankful for this opportunity for you. But Mr. Cagle, I do think in all fairness for the citizenry, I think that when we start looking at the reasons why we're growing, and you did touch on the fact that we do have to start working efficiently, smarter, not harder, and creating a balance at every level of leadership as it come, as it relates to running our city. Mr. Cagle, I do think that we should address, though, for the community, what that position looks like in general, and then how those duties would be divided. I know that like the City of Temple has two assistant city managers. Cities are size. I think it's over 100,000 generally in populations, how they structure it, typically have two if that's correct, but can you explain to the citizens why you feel as a city manager, we are in fact ready, outside of the general, which is population, that we are ready in fact for another assistant city manager?
Sure. I, I think we, it's been needed for a long time. It's not, it's not just now, it's just, we had the opportunity to make it work. It probably should have done this some time ago, but yes, and as you said, there's plenty of cities under 100,000 that have two or, or three, and cities smaller than us that have even more than that, but the, the way this would be split up under Mr. Reynolds, you're gonna see, Public Works is a huge department, and so we would, if this is approved tonight, we will hire another Public Works Director, but we will split up Public Works a little bit, where the, the traditional Public Works of, of streets, utilities, water, would, would be under a new Public Works Director, but we'll have Solid Waste report directly to Mr. Reynolds, and it, it's hard to find someone in the Public Works arena that has all of those experience in all of those departments, and then Development Services, Engineering, Community Development would be under Mr. Reynolds. Police, Fire, Finance, Legal will continue to report to me, and then on, on Ms. Wilson's side would continue with the departments that she's had, Aviation, Animal Control, HR, IT, Parks and Rec, and State Cemetery, and I don't think I left anybody out, I just jotted those down.
Development Services.
Yes, and Development Services, that's under Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, and the City of Colleen's gonna be lucky to have your leadership shared with us across the board. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cobb, then Councilmember Solomon.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Reynolds. That should be, that's a good feat, but you know what it really means? Leadership is not a position or a title. I can be called councilwoman all day, you can be called assistant city manager all day, but what's exciting about it, it's what you do, it's your action. I kinda like get a little upset sometimes when I call some of the constituents in District 3, and I say, well, this is what we're gonna do, and this is how it's gonna happen, and one of my constituents always tell me, I'm gonna call Mr. Reynolds. I said, okay, call Mr. Reynolds, and let's see if he says the same thing that I've just told you. So happily, we say it the same thing, and he'll call me back. He said, well, I guess that'll go, Ms. Cobb, I'm happy with that. Well, I'm happy today, because when you work hard, I think Dion says it, when you look good, you work hard, and you do the right things, you, you all right. So, Mr. Reynolds, you're gonna be all right. Thank you for serving our city.
Thank you, madam.
Councilmember Solomon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Reynolds, thank you. I want to say this, that we were, the city has improved since you came in Director of Public Works, and we are better off because of you and your staff and what you do. I've been down there a few times, and so impressed of, of your leadership, and it shows among the employees, and I think that we are better off having you in this position. The city is, will benefit greatly because of this, and, yeah, the citizens, so people, they ask me, well, how, what would it benefit? It will benefit the community in breaking down in these positions, and so thank you for what you have done, and in advance, thank you for what you're going to do in this position. God bless you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kendrick.
All right. I, I, everything everybody already said was great things, but I will tell a story, a short story, when I met Mr. Reynolds. Your leadership is outstanding. From the moment I walked into your office, I was welcomed. Almost was ready to put on a uniform and go to work for you that day. You know, I'm, I'm retired, but I mean, you just made me feel so welcome, and that is what we need. When you have that welcome, you have employees that are willing to stay, willing to, when things aren't going totally their way, they got good leadership, they will follow that leadership, they will run through a brick wall for that leadership, they will do the most for that leadership, and without going into everything that everybody say, I just want to say thank you from one soldier to another that's advancing in his career. Continue with the way that you are going, and I see nothing but great things.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I also just wanted to do a side note, council, is that all our executive directors, they do an amazing job in their department. I guess more so with Mr. Reynolds when it comes to the infrastructure, Mr. Andrew, and we see he has the waste management when they pick up your trash, so we have a lot of residents that call us on those issues, concerns, and it may not even be an issue, just a concern, Mr. Andrew, Department 2, and it doesn't take away from our current assistant city manager, Mrs. Wilson, who have held the reins with Mr. Cagle and carried a lot of weight, so we know how much she can bear, we just don't want her to break. And Mrs. Wilson, I want to thank you for what you have done coming in, carrying the ball across the line to assist Mr. Cagle with moving the city forward, and Mr. Reynolds, if the council appoint him, will only enhance the city. I don't want to take away from our fire chief, our police chief, and all our executive directors, because we, they all do an amazing job. Mr. Cagle just chose him for this particular time. All right? Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Ladies.
I didn't see your hand. Anytime now.
Oh. Madam Mayor, I also applaud, and I fully support his appointment. I think this, the two assistant city managers, Mr. Cagle has nominated, Miss Wilson now, Mr. Reynolds, I applaud you on those appointments. Also, an personal note, he served with Jeff in the Army, and during deployment, I've seen him first, he'd be kind, the kind of leader under pressure that we need. His profession, professionalism, his humility, his leadership has already shown in Public Works. Only fear is now trying to find a Public Works Director that can step up to the plate, but I do believe his transition to become one of our assistant city managers will strengthen our leadership team and ensure continuity that we need, and give us someone who already understands both the operational challenges and the community we serve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, council, for your kind words and your confidence in our current leadership and adding a new leader to our senior leadership team. Thank you, McDaniel, Mrs. McDaniel, and Mr. Reynolds. Madam Secretary, I said I was not gonna say that, but I just want to know we're ready. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I'll read the next two. They are similar and both presented by Ms. McDaniel.
Yes, ma'am.
OR 25012, consider an ordinance to amend the number of authorized civil service positions for the Colleen Police Department. OR 25013, consider an ordinance to amend the number of authorized civil service positions for the Colleen Fire Department. Good afternoon again.
I apologize. I want to acknowledge Assistant City Manager, he's gone from Leander, Mr. Rebell, but he came to see Mr. Reynolds, but he was in the audience. Okay. I apologize. Go ahead, Oliver.
As discussed, the civil service system was established back in 1977, and city council by ordinance is prescribed, shall prescribe the number of authorizations in each classification. Currently, the police department's civil service staffing is 218 police officers, 30 sergeants, 10 lieutenants, four captains, and two assistant chiefs of police. One decision package was approved in FY '26 annual budget, which would increase the staffing levels. The budget was approved, now we have to approve the ordinance, so we would be increasing to 222 police officers and 31 sergeants. The staff recommends that the city approve the ordinance, amending the total number of authorizations for police officer positions, increasing authorizations by four, and the police sergeant position, increasing authorizations by one, in support of the decision package that was approved in the FY '26 annual budget. Can you answer any questions?
Thank you. Chief Lopez, please come to the mic. And Chief Kabinsky, it's gonna be the same question. The feedback we receive, as you know, is not always positive about why we adding positions, and I would like for both of you, starting with you, Chief Lopez, why is this important, this position is important for the mission of the police department?
As our city grows, you know, we have subdivisions growing up all over the city. We have new people coming in, and we need to eventually expand our, our force, but this unit is gonna be specifically set up for the downtown unit, because we have some areas in downtown that we need to address, and this unit, the one sergeant and four officers, are gonna be assigned to handle the, those issues downtown, from when it comes to community engagement, to doing on crime prevention classes, to addressing the root cause of crime, and to identify those areas. So we're gonna use those positions to bolster our position and our presence in the downtown area.
Thank you, David. Excellent response. Thank you. Chief Kabinsky, you next. Oh, you gotta, she gotta say it first. Yes, ma'am. I would just let, he'll get lost on me, I would keep bowing him.
So similarly, similarly for the fire department, you guys, the city council would need to approve an ordinance to prescribe the number of authorizations. Currently, we have 211 fire rescue officers, 40 captains, six battalion chiefs, three deputy chiefs, and two assistant chiefs of fire. Two decision packages were approved for FY '26 annual budget, and it amends these authorizations as follows. We would be actually decreasing one fire captain to increase one battalion chief, and then adding an additional deputy chief. So we are simply swapping a captain for a battalion chief and then adding a deputy chief, and again, this is done by ordinance, and we recommend that you approve the ordinance, amending the total number of authorizations, decreasing fire captain by one, increasing battalion chief by one, and adding an additional deputy chief position as approved in the FY '26 annual budget.
Thank you. Chief Kabinsky, you're always on the move. I'm surprised we could get you today, because you like to be with your firefighters when they're out there doing the job you and Chief Lopez, so thank you both for taking the time to be here.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Let's address the, the battalion chief and captain item first. This is specifically for the fire marshal's office, and currently, the fire marshal's office has four captains that report directly to the assistant chief, who is the fire marshal. This is giving us a line of succession for two different reasons. Number one, to have an assistant fire marshal, and that's an extended responsibility that a battalion chief rank should have. So we're not taking any captains off of the operations division, that is staying the same. This is just to- This is just to have that captain rank be moved to a battalion chief. That also gives us the ability right now, where we have four captains who are reporting directly to an Assistant Chief, bypassing a battalion chief or deputy chief rank. It'd be like having an E3 report directly to a First Sergeant for our military folks. It just doesn't work in that line and that chain of command, so it improves our communications and our chain of command as well. So, that's that item. The second item being the fourth deputy chief. The Fire Department has grown by 33 people since I arrived here five years ago, nine for the addition of Medic Two, and now 24 for the addition of Station Four, yet our administrative team has not grown. There's a lot of responsibility that goes along with that. So, that deputy chief will be in charge of administration. They will oversee buildings and vehicles, equipment, just on a very basic level, some other things as well. But again, an Assistant Chief is handling that day-to-day operational role of making sure fire engines are maintained, fire stations are maintained, and that really is a deputy chief role, but we just don't have the bandwidth with the current three deputy chiefs that are there. So, this allows us to be able to pay attention to, we've done a great job paying attention to growing the force, but now we have to pay attention to maintaining the things that the force needs to be able to respond to the calls that our citizens rely on us to respond to.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Any questions, counsel? All right. Madam Secretary?
PH 25054, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2025 annual budget of the City of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds.
Welcome back, Mrs. Tangland.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. This item is for fiscal year 2025 budget amendment as the year end. For the city's financial governance policy, Section 5 Budget Administration B1, City Council may amend or change the budget by ordinance. Additionally, Article 5, Section 56 of the City Charter requires a public hearing before finalizing any budget amendments that add or increase appropriations. This budget amendment ensures compliance with these requirements and addresses necessary adjustments based on changes that have occurred since the beginning of the fiscal year. The required notice of public hearing was published in the local newspaper on September The first one will be the General Fund. This amendment transferred the projected excess fund balance to the governmental CIP Fund for City Council direction on August 5th for one-time projects. That is for the Fire Department Training Tower, the Police Department Inbound Lot, and fleet additions for fiscal year 2026, FTEs already approved in the '26 budget. Transferred Risk Management ISF due to increased TML premiums. That transfer, you're gonna see it in every single fund, because we transferred it to the ISF to cover those increases. And the auditor entered an additional salary for hours beyond the budget. So, you can see over here, this is the part-time salaries, this is the risk management, $68,000 Risk Management ISF, and the total, we're going to apply at the fund balance is $1.3 For the OPOE Settlement Fund, the appropriations of settlement revenue and program expenditures per Resolution 25-126. The total revenue we received for the ground reimbursement was $159,589, and we appropriated the total expenses. For the Hotel occupancy tax fund, we plan to use the fund balance for special event center roof replacement for Resolution 25062. As you can see, it's a 233783 here. We transfer asset value from Drainage Utility Fund to Hot Fund, that was a trailer, for $7,000, and the transfer to Risk Management ISF to cover that increase of insurance premiums. For the Street Maintenance Fund, fund balance allocated to the Water Crest Road Recreation Project for Resolution 25-82. The amount was 336,697. For the Court Technology Fund, fund balance allocated for completion of cube management kiosk installation at the court for $5,000. For Parks and Recreation Special Renew Fund, the naming rights revenue and corresponding expenditures for Resolution 71 and 77, and installation of forest scoreboards, also for the Texas Parks and Wildfire Grant revenue and related expenditures for the Pickable Court project. You can see here the naming rights, and then the state ground reimbursement, $1,500, and this is the allocations for the expenditures. The total, $98,000. For the Texas State Veteran Cemetery Fund, their part for the risk management. For the Solid Waste Fund, we are allocating additional funds to cover increased refuse disposal costs from higher tonnage, offset by additional revenues. We increased the solid waste commercial services by 250, solar assets by 200, drop fees by 150, and we have solar specialty disposal fees by 50,000, and here's the refusal disposal cost for 650, and their part on the transfer to Risk Management. For Water and Sewer Fund, the additional funds allocated to cover increased collection expenses, offset by additional revenues, revenues utility collection service charges by 30,000, and here's the collection expenses, and their part of the risk management. For the Drainage Utility Fund, the part for risk management, and also the transfer asset, the tractor we were talking about from the Drainage Utility Enterprise Fund to Hot Fund. Oh, what happened? Let me go back here somewhere. We were...
Hot Fund.
We almost there. Oh, we did this.
There you go. You passed it. No, there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this is for the transferred asset value, the tractor and the utility, to the Utility Enterprise Fund. Coast Cords, the additional revenue and offsetting operation expenses and fund balance allocated for one-time maintenance and equipment cost. This is the additional revenues, 160, and the amount of solar projects that they have by $39,000 allocated to the fund balance, from the fund balance. For the Aviation Fund, their part for the risk management, 2,728. And here's the other side, the Risk Management Fund, all the allocations from each fund, and the insurance services increase for 114,175.
Would you, would you repeat that, what you just stated?
For the Risk Management Fund, this is the side allocating for all the funds into the ISF to pay for the insurance services, and 114,000, that was the increase of the TML premiums.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. For the Debt Service Fund, the fund balance allocated to cover, to cover increased pay agent fees by 10,000. And for the Capital Improvement Program Funds, this is the other side, the transfer from General Fund for the one-time expenses for the Training Tower, Inbound Lot, and the fleet additions. And this side here, and we also are allocating, teething grant revenue and corresponding expenditures. We require grant match funded from fund balance allocated for generators for grant acceptance letter. And we also are locating the GRK Office Building for the Resolution 2569, the Fire Station 9 H Back, Resolution 2564, and the crematorium building, Animal Services, Resolution 051. This is the revenue, the transfer for the General Fund, the state ground reimbursement, and the funds applied in the Capital Improvement Program. And these ones over here are the one-time from General Fund, this is the generator, and the other three projects that it was approved by Resolution. The total is 4 million. For Aviation CIP Fund, proceeds from Aviation List Revenue Bonds, designated, I'm sorry, for the designated capital projects for ordinance 25-32, the bond proceeds were 3.5, and the project that is the building, 3.5, plus issuance costs and pay agent. For the Aviation AIP Fund, the ground revenue expenditures for Resolution 25-110 for the Skylark AWOS Project, for Resolution 25137 and 138, for the Terminal Mechanical and Security Improvements Project, and Resolution 25129 for the Terminal Rehab Project. Here's the allocation for the grants, total of 5.7, and here's the projects, the expenses And Aviation PFC Fund is the required grant match for the Terminal Mechanical and Security Improvements Projects for the Resolution 137 and 138, and the fund balance allocated for the PFC Application Announcement Letter, total of 318,454. For the Water and Sewer CIP Fund, fund balance allocated for the Resolution 25-69 for the GRK Office Building for 684,824. For the Water Impact Fee Fund, fund balance allocated in the Water Impact Fee Fund to support professional agreement for updating the city's water and wastewater impact fees for Resolution 25-119, $126. For the Water and Sewer Improvement Bond, the proceeds from Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, the city's 2025, allocated for designated capital projects for ordinance We had budgeted 17 million, so we allocated the rest of the bond that we issued, that it was total of 37. This is the revenues, and here's the, all the projects that we allocated with that And this slides summarize the adopted budget by fund categories. The CIP rollover, the two amendments previously approved this year and the proposed year-end amendment. So, if you look, this will be your adopted budget, this will be your CIP role, carry forward mid-year, and this is the year-end budget one that we're doing right now, and this will be the amended budget at the end of the year after this is approved. The CIP roll amount reflects budgeted funds from projects that were approved in prior years, and that is the 126 million. In accordance with the Capital Improvement Program adopted by council in 2018, this project's budget automatically rolls forward at the beginning of each fiscal year, and remains in place until the projects are completed. Because this rollover occurs by policy, no additional budget amendment is required, and this item did not come back before council. So, this is an automatic rollover that we have every year for the projects. The recommendation is the City Council approved the ordinance amending the fiscal year '25 annual budget, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, thank you. I have several questions. First of all, I want to give you a compliment on your slides. They were so simplistic. They were easy to read. So, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Maybe I missed it, didn't understand it. But I understood the fire tower, for the fire station.
Yes.
But I thought Chief Kobinski requested something else. Or, did I miss it? Or was it Chief Lopez? No?
No, the fire tower was the one that it was approved.
That was it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And one more thing, and I could be wrong, Mr. Cagle, you might have to help me with this. Somewhere this year, we talked about signage for Colleen coming in and out. Was that not included in a capital improvement project, or no?
Yes, ma'am, it's in there. These were changes, and that was approved during the budget process. So, there is money to do two intersections.
Okay.
And the suggestion is, we start on the east and west side of town, do one on each side, and then the next year, if more money's approved, we do the next two till we've gotten all the way through town.
Okay. Those was the two things I remember, I just didn't see. But you said it's only the fire tower?
I'm sorry, is the Training Tower for the Fire Department, the Inbound Lot for Police Department, and fleet additions? Those were the three ones.
Sorry, I didn't, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I only saw the tower. Okay, I see it now. I apologize for that. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Kendrick.
Okay. My question goes back to the state maintenance, I mean, the street maintenance fund, when we're talking about Water Crest reconstruction. I remember I asked the question in reference to it when we had to do the first change order, whether or not the city was putting in more money, but the money was already allocated. How much money was left from that? And is the 336,697 an addition that needed to be done to Water Crest?
I'm assuming your question is, there was a change order?
Right.
And this money would go toward the change order?
No, ma'am.
No?
The change order, change order number one, which if I'm remembering it correct, there was enough monies allocated initially for that change order.
Correct, that is correct.
And now, we still, we got another change order for 336,697. What was left from what was already allocated?
Okay. From the first change order one, is that...
Yes.
Okay.
So, change order two was already approved by Resolution 25-082. I'm not sure if Andrew want to speak off, but...
So, his question is, was there any money left over from change order one?
So, we've had two change orders on the Water Crest project. The first one was to add essentially a contingency amount, which, for small items that may occur during the site. You know, we have some changes, we find something, we have to have the contractor submit things like a change order, but we have such a lump sum money that we wanted in the contract. The second change order was affecting, was related to a bigger item, something that wasn't the small item. It was lime treatment on the roadway, based on the bad soils. There were some water issues, you know, water line issues that we had to change because of existing conditions. And it was a little bit more than what we considered those small changes, and so, that's where we came with that larger change order. But the amount for the first one is still there. So, if we have any items that are still coming during construction that may pop up that are small enough, we have that little amount reserved set aside to take care of those small things. And then, at the end of the project, if it's still left over, it comes back into the pot of money that'll go towards the other street projects.
That's what I was trying to understand. All right, thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and read the next three. They'll be presented by the same presenter. PH 25055, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Charles Amundsen on behalf of Terry Blake Bearden, case number Z2526, to rezone approximately 1.26 acres out of a 2.15 acre tract in the T Robinett Survey, abstract number 686, locally addressed as 3309 Old Farm to Market 440, Colleen, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B5 Business District. PH 25056, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the City of Colleen Thoroughfare Plan. PH 25057, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 31, zoning, establishing a site development permit process.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mrs. Messer, good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. This item is a request to rezone a piece of property. It's approximately 1.2 acres in size, from its current zoning of R1 to B5 Business District. The adjacent property to the south, as you may remember, was recently rezoned from R1 to B5 as well on August 19th. If approved, the applicant intends to purchase both properties and plot them into one lot in order to develop an automotive repair facility. Subject property is located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated regional commercial on the future land use map. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site, so you can see it's a narrow sliver on the southwest corner of Elms and Old FM 440. This portion here was recently rezoned to B5 as well. This is a view of the subject property from Elms Road facing south, view facing east on Elms Road with the subject property on the right, view facing west with the subject property on the left. We notified 32... We notified thirty-two surrounding properties regarding this request, and we've received one written response in support and one in opposition. This is the notification boundary for that property. Saff finds that the request for B five is consistent with the future land use map, and we are therefore recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone the property to B five. Planning and Zoning Commission on August eleventh also recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Need the next presentation. This item is a proposed amendment to the City of Colleen thoroughfare plan. As you know, the thoroughfare plan establishes a transportation network for the city and establishes a framework for the orderly development of roadways. It includes their alignments, connections, and street classifications, and as the city grows, it becomes necessary to amend or revise the thoroughfare plan accordingly. This proposed amendment is necessary to align with the existing and proposed residential growth and to account for the topography of the area. This map shows the thoroughfare plan for the city and the location of the proposed amendment in this area here. On the left-hand side of your screen is the currently adopted thoroughfare plan, where you can see there's an east-west collector that is proposed to go from Bunny Trail to Fort Hood Street. There's, it's hard to tell from this map, but there's significant topography right here in that area circled in blue, so the proposed collector would essentially run right through that hill. So what we're proposing to do on the left is to change that alignment to go around the topography and tie into the subdivision to the east. We're also proposing to change the classification of that from a collector to a residential collector, which has a slightly narrower street width. Saff finds, again, that the topography in the area would prevent the construction of the roadways, as contemplated in the thoroughfare plan, and by modifying the alignment classification of the thoroughfare will ensure east-west connectivity from Bunny Trail to Fort Hood Street. We are therefore recommending approval as presented. Planning and Zoning Commission on August eleventh also recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, there are no questions. PH dash twenty-five dash zero five seven.
Okay, the third item tonight, my third item tonight, is a proposed amendment to Chapter thirty-one of the Code of Ordinances regarding a site development permit process. So as you know, on June seventeenth, the city council approved the new FY twenty-six fee schedule, which provides for a new fee for commercial site plan review. The new fee will go into effect on October first of this year. Purpose of the proposed ordinance is to establish a permit requirement and a process for review of commercial site plans. If approved, the proposed ordinance also goes into effect on October first. The fee structure for commercial site plan review is a thousand dollars for properties zero to five acres. More than five acres, up to fifteen acres, is two thousand dollars, and over fifteen acres would be twenty-five hundred. If approved, the proposed ordinance will establish Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-one, Article eight, site development permit required. Purpose of the proposed ordinance is to establish a formal review process for new non-residential and multifamily development to ensure that new development conforms with all applicable code requirements. Proposed process will ensure conformance with requirements related to building setbacks, drainage and detention, driveways and access, fire protection, off-street parking, sidewalks, landscaping, screening, lighting, solid waste, et cetera. With that, we are recommending approval of the ordinance as presented, and the Planning and Zoning Commission on August twenty-fifth also recommended approval, seven to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, there's one question, the off-street parking, example of that.
So the Code of, Chapter thirty-one, the zoning ordinance has requirements for off-street parking that are, it's a parking ratio typically based on square footage, so depending on your use, you have a different parking ratio. So for any proposed use, whether it's retail, there's a particular parking ratio, so in that site plan review process, we're checking to make sure that the adequate number of off-street parking spaces is provided based on the size and nature of the use.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions for you. All right, citizen comments. Mr. Mark Ramtham? Good afternoon, so you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Ramtham, I'm with AEG Fuels, and we're here to recommend that the council set aside the recommendation of the aviation and vote no on adapting the ABF contract. As we went through, in the bid that's published, ABF had published a price of two dollars and thirty-two cents per gallon for fuel, and then said they made a mistake and picked the wrong week, but they never provided a correction of what week they referenced. Looking back over the past year, I don't find this price anywhere. So this is not something that the airport board would know, but this kind of raises questions about the whole bid, and so we're recommending that kind of vote no and put it out to rebid.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pro, yes, sir, thank you. Can someone explain to the council and also to the public the statement that was made about, I guess my question would be, why is the amount of the fuel important, and why do it have to be where somebody can see it, per what he was saying? Would you go through that, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So on the bid proposal, it was directed that all three, or all individuals who are proposing a bid for the City of Colleen pull fuel from the same day, from the same plat, from the same pump, per se, in layman's terms.
Thank you for that.
All three RP that we received, ABF, Titan, and AEG actually pulled from the same plat. They all had exactly the same thing. When the board was reviewing the numbers, we noticed an irregularity on the pricing that ABF had. We verified that the plat was the same plat as AEG and Titan fuel, so we noticed that it was just an irregularity. The executive director then directed us to call ABF to confirm that price that they had put on there. They realized that that was an irregularity, they misprinted that, they did not pull fuel from a different day, a different time, it was the same as the other two vendors. So we deemed it as an irregularity, and then we moved forward with the process.
So if that would have happened to any other company, any other time, would that be the process you would follow?
Yes, ma'am, we would do the exact same thing. So if AEGs looked off, when we noticed it was the same plat number and everything else, we would have called AEG and asked them for clarity as well.
Okay, any questions from council? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kegel, did you have a thing? Okay, thank you. Next person, Sean Price. Good afternoon, you have three minutes.
Oh, I didn't hear a word. I didn't even know you gave a name. You're so quiet here. So we're not on a public hearing, right? No, okay. So under RS twenty-five one fifty-four, I'm just wondering what the annual salary will be assessed to our tax base, right? Because this position is going to add to our tax base, right? And will it be taken away from Mr. Kegel's annual salary? Because then he's doing less work, right? So if we're getting more people to do, disperse the work out amongst more people, then I think someone that's not having to do as much work as they were getting paid for, they can get a reduction in pay. Under DS twenty-five zero forty-five, will the individuals here be, will their focus be to lower our tax or reduce the two hundred and eighty-five million dollars of debt the city has acquired or incurred? Unless it's actually increased, I think we've gone up to three hundred and fifteen million dollars in debt now. Or will be going up here. And in the twenty-five one forty-six, I'm just questioning, we're spending seventy-six thousand dollars on eight movies. Just wondering why we're spending money on movies? And then not only that, for forty-four thousand dollars for Caribbean Affairs Festival? I don't know why we're, a total of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars, and I can't see where we're actually, I mean, there's a couple of things in there that are benefit overall to the city, but I don't really see it, especially with seventy-six or seventy-six thousand dollars, and to produce eight movies that are twenty thousand dollars a movie? We're paying twenty thousand dollars a movie? For what? So people don't use Netflix? I don't, anyway. And then RS one forty-seven, to nominate Mr. Kimball, I think that's a wrong idea for any position on any board for the city, for the city government at all. It's my opinion, I'm not here to air the dirty laundry about the man, but I think it's a no for me, and if you, I would revoke his nomination if it were my decision to do so. Thank you for your time.
Melissa Brown, you have three minutes. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Just for the gentleman that was just speaking, it was the community theater, not screen theater, but the community theater under the Arts Commission, I believe is what he was referring to.
Speaking of the Arts Commission, we would have more money for that if the city were to support activities that actually brings tourism into the area instead of making it difficult for people to get approved to have their events. It has become very well-known that it is difficult to work with the City of Colleen to get a permit to have an event that would be drawing people in. Doing that would also allow us to have hot funds for K triple C upkeep at the same time. The council should consider adding an additional budget to the Arts Commission in order to advertise for these events, since we have to spend money from hot funds to advertise, let's put it into advertising the stuff going on in the city. I know that properly planned and with cooperation, we can bring a lot of attention to the museum, I've done it, without having to have any money from the city go directly to the museum for marketing. Let's talk about boards and commission appointments. The mayor doesn't want anyone who's served his term to continue and is concerned about making sure no one who has served before is allowed back onto a board or a different board, but she's okay with recalled former council member, Mr. Michael Boyd, and other friends being reappointed or appointed to other boards. Meanwhile, there's no concern for how board members speak in public forums and horrendous things they say that celebrate murders. Okay. I'm also confused on how no one was prepared for this. Everyone has known about this for at least a week. As far as reopening selected apps in the mayor's discretion and direction, all board apps should be kept continuously open. The city regularly has turnover in boards and commissions, and your application also appears to only be available in an online version now, which disenfranchise and eliminates anyone who does not have the ability to use a computer. You already pick based on who you like or don't like, don't hear from or listen to most of your boards already, and ignore the public, so why disenfranchise the citizens more by limiting their ability to apply for boards? Just because a lot of cities have a, I'm going to move on, just because a lot of cities have a second assistant city manager when they hit a hundred thousand population, doesn't mean that we warrant one. Let's look at the number of employees by city. Temple has fifteen hundred, Waco two thousand, Colleen about one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six-ish, Amarillo almost three thousand, Abilene sixteen hundred, Denton twenty-six, Grand Prairie is sixteen ninety-one, Lubbock, and everybody else is well over twenty-five hundred. We are well below our peer cities. These points are nothing negative about Mr. Reynolds, who I'm sure will do a great job now, and also be ready to move up when Mr. Kegel leaves. And finally, I haven't heard people saying we shouldn't hire more fire or police employees. We are simply asking for better fiscal decisions, and spending three hundred and eight thousand dollars a year for a second assistant city manager is not it.
And for the public, I did not make any recommendations for any boards and commissions, and I also stated before the council made those decisions that I would be neutral. The mayor does not have the final say. The council all agreed that they wanted to open it back up, and at that time, the names that were in there, they, some people qualify and others did not. So regardless of who was appointed tonight, I did not appoint anyone, and the council, majority council decided on each board member. Couple of years ago, the council agreed that if you already served on certain committees and your time was up, you would not be reserving in that position. I didn't make that decision, the council did. Citizen comment is closed. Madam Secretary, Consignor Gendt. Oh, council, stand by, please, I apologize. Councilmember Kendrick, I'm quick with the draw with that, you see that? Yeah, okay.
It's okay. I did want to say something, and I remember having this conversation when we was talking about the hot tax and the museum, and I remember specifically a citizen saying we should not be using the hot tax to advertise the museum, but I just heard today we should be using the hot tax, which is what it is intended for to advertise. So am I not correct with that?
So you have a great memory. Any more comments, sir? Okay, let's move on then. Madam Secretary, Consignor Gendt.
MN twenty-five zero two-three, RS twenty-five one four-five, RS twenty-five one four-six, RS twenty-five one four-seven, RS twenty-five one four-eight, RS twenty-five one four-nine.
RS dash...
RS twenty-five one five-zero, RS twenty-five one five-one, RS twenty-five one five-two, RS twenty-five one five-three, RS twenty-five one five-four, OR twenty-five zero one-two, and OR twenty-five zero one-three.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the dissent items.
Councilmember RS.
Mayor, I second that motion.
Any comments? All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Yes, sir, I have you. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Motion carries six to zero. Council, Mrs. Messer has gone through PH dash twenty-five dash zero five-four, would you like for her to go back through it? All right, as we move on.
I will need to...
That was Ms. Tangalane, but Madam Secretary, you have to read the caption.
Yes, thank you.
No, no problem.
PH twenty-five zero five-four, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five annual budget of the City of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the city council of the City of Colleen, Texas, amending the FY twenty-twenty-five annual budget of the City of Colleen to increase revenue and expense accounts in multiple funds, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance, providing a savings clause and establishing an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, as I stated, I misspoke, Ms. Tangalane went through the slides, would you like for her to go back through? Would you like for her to go back through? No. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
It would be nice if you actively listened to us, because then you would know that I said before and today that we should not be giving our marketing money to Fort Hood. And because we do listen, to answer the mayor's question, you are listened to and recorded. Station five is the other fire request that you were thinking about. It is not on this one, because that was part of a CO bonds that wasn't budgeted in FY 25. And so that wouldn't be on this presentation. This is only for stuff from FY 25 money. Cool. Do we really... Do we need to allocate some more of this money over to Gilmer in order to get Gilmer finished? Gilmer has been sitting torn apart a lot longer than Watercrest and Bunny Trail. And yet, I've heard people in the council talk about the other two roads and not Gilmer Street. The only time I've heard anyone talk about Gilmer Street lately was when the news came in talking about a business potentially having to close because no one could access the business in the way the signage was on that road. If we're gonna be allocating money from the year end, if there is an issue with funding for Gilmer, I think that the public and the council deserve to know that, and they deserve to be discussing that before we even worry about the other two roads. Because yes, all of those streets are important, but we started Gilmer first. Let's get that finished. Gilmer has been a 15-year problem where it has been basically undrivable. But you know, that's North Colleen, and most of you don't care about North Colleen. That's the impression that's given. Water lines, I may be mistaken or misunderstanding, but the way the presentation came across and the answer that was given with Watercrest as far as the money that was reallocated, and again, that takes active listening to understand that part. But with the issues with the water lines, I was hoping that you're not saying that the water line costs would come out of the street maintenance fee. I believe that actually that was supposed to mean that we were going to have to do some redesign for it and engineer it differently because of the water lines. But please correct me if I'm wrong, because I would hate to think that we're using street maintenance fee money to move water lines. And then I see all of these increases that we're gonna be putting into 195 and Featherline and the Tremere Basin, again, all in South Colleen, all beneficial to the Chaparral, East Tremere, all the way down to the Tremere area, but not so much on North Colleen. The east... I'm sorry, yeah, the Tremere Basin water sewer line that we're talking about, that was budgeted in '23 and completed in '24. Why are we putting more money into that now, Mr. Kegel? Why are we putting money into that in '26 if it was finished in '24? I think that's important to know.
Thank you. Your time is up.
154, right? Was any thought given to reduce our city debt? Do you know our actual debt overall, Madam Mayor? I take your silence as a sign of disrespect. And, you know, barely common for you. I'm just looking at if we got additional funds to move around and flop from one account to another, to another account, to another account, and that our debt service is going from 17 million to 21 million, and all our debt keeps increasing and increasing and increasing, right? That means you gotta take more money from the rest of us. And it's... This all minority city council has taken the taxes from all of us out here in the public. It's your ideas. It's the way that you're spending the money, what you're coming up with and what you're voting on, right? You look at me and you go, "He's worthless to even look at." I get it. I'm well-hated by this city council, and I understand that. I ask a simple question and I get no answers 90% of the time. Some of you I have gotten some answers from on the city council, but the majority of you, especially the mayor, right? All I get is animus and hate. And all I'm looking for is a simple answer. So I'm just wondering where you're putting the money? And if we're just flopping around to pay for more stuff, why not pay for our debt and get that off? Maybe we can take some interest and buy new things. Thank you.
You're welcome. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, ma'am. To our constituent and other constituents who might be in the audience and/or listening, I just want to make sure that the record is clear that my race and/or ethnicity have zero to do with the way in which I vote, also that my integrity is there by being questioned by that constituent. Out of respect, Madam Mayor, you can clarify the process if you so would, because we do have new people here. We also do have new people that are also online that are watching. But typically, it's out of respect that we do not go back and forth with our constituents, that we wait until the hearings or the sessions are closed, so that way if anybody else has questions that may be similar, we can address them. Is that not correct?
Yes, ma'am. But I think tonight is just an attack on me, and I don't vote. I don't do anything. I'm just here to be in charge. But that is the process.
It's out of respect we do that. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Councilwoman Cobb.
I wish the person who had made the comment, the constituent that was here and made such a comment, would have stayed. When we're honest, just, and fair in the line of work that we do, and that is nothing but the all-minority council has done, we have been just, we have been fair, we have done the things that we had to do. Sometimes things don't work the way that some folks may think, but we have been fair, honest, and just. We listen, we take your comments. You can email me all day long, and I'm sure you can email. Our mayor has stood up for what was right and for this city. Changes have occurred. Remember, we were even a little upset for the change orders, things that changed. We can't stop everything. But again, to be fair, to be honest, to be just... Maybe your questions are not answered in the way in which you think they should be answered. And maybe that is so, and I'm not talking... I cannot talk to the audience. However, to be honest...
Councilwoman Cobb. Melissa Brown. No, ma'am, please. When you were up here, not a person disrespected you, yelled out, screamed, or interrupted you. You want respect? Please show respect, because this council is not gonna do it to you. Please respect. Councilwoman Cobb, she's been recognized, and she has the floor. Councilwoman Cobb, I...
We...
First warning, and I know you want to be put out, but you play that game with somebody else. Councilwoman Cobb, I truly apologize for that rudeness from her.
We have worked hard to meet the needs of this city. Maybe it's not met in the need or in the way in which you may think, but once again, I must say, to be just, we have been. We have the numbers to everything that we've asked and what we've spent. Maybe it's not the way that some of us would like to spend it, but it's there. I believe, as the minority council, as we're known as, have done a great job. I think this city has benefited, has benefited from not only the leadership of our mayor, but from the leadership of these council members. When I walk out or when I receive a call from constituents, I try my best to ensure that I follow through. I may never say a word to anyone, but I guarantee they saw me. I guarantee the job has been done, not for just myself, but for any council member. Well, I better close here.
Counsel... Oh, Councilmember Kendrick.
All right. I've been on this council since about... Since May. And I've seen a lot of disrespect. And it's really... It's time for it to stop. We're supposed to be working as a city and working together as one team, but when you have those... I don't want to use the wrong word, but when you have runaways that don't want to comply when they're told, "Hey, the floor is not yours yet. You had your time, nobody disrespected you." To me, I live by a creed when I was in the military. You know, I'm learning incompetence is my watchword. I'm learning this job as I go, like anybody that sits in this seat. I do not look at anything on a race base. I was not raised that way. And I spent many years in the military doing this, leading soldiers into combat, losing soldiers into combat. And for people to come in here, a soldier that just left, he's not a soldier. He's probably worked as R and R. Those are the people who we don't put in charge of things. And I'm saying what's on my heart right now. It has to stop. Point of order. Please be quiet, Ms. Brown. This really has to stop. It has to stop. In no government will decisions be made that's gonna please everybody. It's not gonna happen, because for one, we don't live in a perfect world. But what we try to do up here is do our best. And I will say, since there is a little bit of disrespect still as I'm talking, you had the opportunity to serve. They didn't vote you back.
Point of order. Counsel... Councilwoman Kendrick, stand by. Melissa Brown. Melissa Brown, stop. You don't have the floor.
Okay. I'll end right there. I'm good.
Counsel... Counsel... Kendrick, please. Counsel, I can't tell you what to do. But that is what she wants. So please, I can't ti... You have one more time. I do not want to put you out, but you want to be put out to get on the front page, to be seen. Please grow up and respect people that have the... You're out of order, and I'm not gonna argue with you. All this child play, please. We're gonna take a break, five-minute break. Get a motion. Councilmember Solomon, that's you.
Make a motion, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion to approve PH-25-054. Can I get a second? Councilmember Cobb.
A second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. It's Councilmember Adams' back. Okay, you for it. All in favor, yes. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Counsel, Mrs. Messer went through PH-25-055. Madam Secretary, will you please read the caption?
PH 25055, "Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Charles Amundson on behalf of Terry Blake Bearden, case number Z2526, to rezone approximately 1.26 acres out of a 2.15 acre tract in the T. Robinette survey, abstract number 686, locally addressed as 3309 Old Farm-to-Market 440, Colleen, Texas, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B5 Business District." The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 1.26 acres out of a 2.15 acre tract in the T. Robinette survey, abstract number 686, from R1 Single Family Residential District to B5 Business District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, as I stated, Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through? All right. Public hearing open. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
I have three minutes. I'm gonna speak from my heart for three minutes, because that's what we're allowed to do now. Because while the mayor may not be able to tell y'all what to say, she can't tell you if you're on agenda or off agenda. Apparently, we're just allowed to talk about whatever tonight. So let's address a couple of things. You may not have cut me off while I was standing here, except for the mayor does with her gavel, right? See, like that?
Please get back on the agenda.
That I find disrespectful. That was both disrespectful and an interruption. So you can't say that y'all don't do that. What I want are my questions answered, and what didn't happen were my questions were not answered, because I was disrespected, because someone before me came up and said something really shitty. And y'all concentrated on that over what the real issues were. On this, I'm gonna tell you, doesn't matter what I actually say, how I feel about this. I don't feel like it does. I feel like I could come up here and tell you that this is the best idea in the world, and you're not going to care, because you don't care what I have to say. You have a predetermined idea of what you think of me, and so you're not caring what I say about this. I can come up here and tell you every reason why I think that this is a bad idea. I could ask you 10 questions about it that are valid, that are concerning to the community, and I do not believe a single one of them would get answered, because I asked some very valid questions. Not a single one was answered. Instead, I got blamed for something someone else said, because I didn't want to be disrespected. Go ahead and ask her. Okay, thank you. This is my time. I have the floor.
Please stay on the agenda. PH-25-055.
And I'm talking about how I feel about this particular case.
Madam City Attorney, is she on the agenda with PH-25-055?
You're eating my time.
Mayor, the legal issue is that she does... I mean, you can keep her on agenda, but it's a fact question to whether you think she's on agenda or not.
It's up to me.
Yes.
Thank you. Please stay on the agenda.
Oh, Miss Neutrality is no longer neutral, is she? Now you just ate up 20 seconds of my time to ask the attorney a question that you were gonna make, you were just hoping for that answer for anyway. But you let all the council members who wanted to speak go on for three minutes, speaking from their heart, about something that had nothing to do with an agenda item whatsoever, about how they made their decisions. I can come up here and talk... You gave me the floor, which means it's my time. I'm not interrupting, and I'm not disrespecting. You've disrespected me three times now during my time that you gave me the floor for. You laugh, you sit up here laughing and giggling. You've kicked me out for laughing before. If you can't not laugh, maybe remove yourself.
Please get back on to PH... Oh, your time is up. The next person is Mr. Charles Amundson. If I mispronounce it, your name, when you get up here, please announce it. Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Charles Amundson, I just wanted to see if you guys had any questions for me over the rezoning case? Representing... over the rezoning case, representing the case.
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to approve PH dash twenty-five dash zero five five? Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to approve PH twenty-five dash zero five five as presented.
Councilmember Kendrick. Any questions, anything from council? All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. I have you, Mayor Proton. Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Counsel, we're now moving to PH dash twenty-five dash zero five six. Madam City Attorney. Madam Secretary.
Thank you. PH twenty-five zero five six, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the City of Colleen thoroughfare plan. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to update the thoroughfare plan, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for publication and an effective date."
Thank you so much, Counsel. Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through them again? All right. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, you have three minutes.
If y'all have ever actually paid attention to what I've said before, then you would know that I'm completely against doing any thoroughfare plan changes with a single public hearing, especially one that is so quietly announced. The thoroughfare plan is part of our comprehensive plan. It's part of our 2040 plan that was put together with an immense amount of public support, public contribution, public discussion, and public meetings. To change it with a single public hearing that happens just barely outside of business hours, that started during the business day, people don't know when they'd be able to come in and speak on, I think is incredibly unfair to the board that we put together to help us come up with the 2040 comprehensive plan and to every citizen and staff member and to every single stakeholder who took all of their time and energy to put into it and to give their feedback and to work together as one unified community to come up with a plan. Not five or six or seven people making a decision about it. Not one person saying, this is what I think should happen, but it's up to y'all to vote. No, it was the community who did this. And there should be a lot more input before we change thoroughfare plans because they are still a change to our comprehensive plan. With that being said, I know that typically a lot of what I say goes kind of in one ear, now the other. I also know that there's not a whole lot of consideration about what gets said at this podium before decisions are made. But because there's not time for that. You hear it, you hear three minutes worth of talking, and then you have to make an immediate decision. You don't have time to consider it like you did before. You don't even get a break in between the, the work session and the meeting. If you're going to do it, though, this is the way to change the thoroughfare plan, which is narrowing roads because our 2040 plan also does call for road dieting, unlike some of the other plans that we've got in place to take two or three lane roads and make them four or five lane roads, plus bicycle lanes, plus sidewalks and everything. Taking it from a collector to a residential collector narrows it. It means less that we're going to have to maintain in the long run. I just think that there needs to be a lot more community interaction before anything associated with that plan gets changed.
Public hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH dash twenty-five dash zero five six? Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to approve PH twenty-five zero five six as presented.
Councilmember Solomon.
Second amendment.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Motion carries six to zero. Counsel, the next item is PH dash twenty-five dash zero five seven. Madam Secretary, would you please read the caption?
PH twenty-five zero five seven, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 31, zoning, establishing a site development permit process. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for site development permit regulations, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for a savings clause, providing for publication, and an effective date."
Thank you. Counsel, as you know, Mrs. Messer has gone through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? All right. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown.
It's not just the words, it's the, the nonverbal communication that demonstrates disrespect also. So three times now, counsel has shown that they don't care what I say. They don't care what questions I ask. You only want to respond if it's something that you feel you need to justify or defend yourself with because those are the only responses that have been given. Those are the only questions that have been asked. So with that, I withdraw because y'all don't care.
Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion to approve PH dash twenty-five dash zero five seven? Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I move to approve PH twenty-five zero five seven as presented.
Councilmember Kendrick.
I second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Motion carries six to zero. We have two discussion items and the DS dash twenty-five dash zero four four. Madam, uh, City Secretary, I can read them or you can?
I can continue, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Please.
DS twenty-five zero four four, receive quarterly financial report.
Thank you. Mrs. Tanglin, thank you for coming back.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Now we're looking at the third quarterly financial report. We like the budget calendar so much that we also created an accounting calendar for fiscal year 2025. That way counsel has an idea whenever we come and present the quarterly report, the audit, and stuff that pertains to that. We expect on the first week or the first report, I mean, the first meeting on March, to have the first quarter financial report and the quarter investment report. Then on March 19th or the second meeting of the council on March, we are expected to have the annual audit results for the fiscal year. Then on May, the second meeting on May, we are bringing the independent audit services. That's whenever you approve the audit services for the fiscal year audit. Then on June 2nd, we expect to, or the first week, the first meeting on June, the second quarter financial report with, along with the quarter investment report. And September, the second meeting on September, the third quarter financial report and the third quarter investment report. And you will see the fourth quarter financial report along with the investment report the first week of December. So in overview for this report, we will have some staffing indicators. And we're going to review the major operating funds and special revenue funds. For the staffing indicators turnover, the 12 months annualized turnover as June 2025 for the total employees is 15.79%. The, for the public safety, police field positions by June 2025 was 96%. And for fire, we were almost 100%. Now we're going to talk about the major funds, general fund, the key revenue sources for general fund. Now, this is the quarter report for the month of June. This is the third quarter, meaning a 75% is actually a good indicator. Less than 75% in revenue may be a little bit worrisome. More than 75% is good. When it comes to the expenses, it's the other way around. So for the total revenues, general fund, we have 84.74%. And that's because property taxes, we collect that in the first quarter. For the expenses, we are 69% with a net change of 14, of 14.7 and the fund balance ending at 49 for the general fund. For water and sewer fund. For the total revenues, for the budget, we are 71%. For the expenses, we are 65%. The net change 270,000 with the fund balance ending at 40 million. For the soliways fund. The budget and the revenues are 76%. The expenses are 73%. The net change of negative 589,000 with the fund balance ending at 6.6 million. For the drainage utility fund. The total revenues, we are 73.7%. And the total expenses are 64%. The net change is 172,000 with the fund balance ending at 1.9 million. For the aviation fund. The total revenues are 95% and the total expenses are 63%. The net change is 2.3 million and the fund balance ending is at 3.8. For the golf carts. Their total revenues are 77%. The expenses are 81%. The net change is 61 and the finance end is at 248,000. The recent expenses in the golf carts are 81% is because they have some capital outlay. Just want to mention that. For hotel occupancy tax fund. Now we're going into the special revenue funds. The total revenues are 52% while the expenses are 53%. The net change is 16,000 with the fund balance ending at 1.7 million. For the street maintenance fund, we are 75.5% of revenue, 63% of expenses with a net change of 5.1 million and the fund balance ending at 17.9 million. I will be happy to answer any questions when I talk about some details on the report.
No, ma'am, there's no questions. Thank you. Oh, by the way, you got, you got the best slides. They're so easy to read. Thank you for that. A lot of work went into that. Thank you and your team. Yes, Mr. Kagan.
Mayor, I just want to say thank you for mentioning that because they put a whole lot of work into changing the, the two reports that you saw tonight to make them more understandable.
Right, that's so-
So thank you.
There's no question about it. Thank you. Great job, great job. All right, counsel, this item, and then we go behind closed session. Just hang on in there. Madam City Secretary.
DS twenty-five zero four five, discuss the procedure for nominations and appointments to the Board of Directors of the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County.
Yes, ma'am. Madam City Attorney, you went through these slides before.
I have, I want to, this is a preview item for two items that are going to be coming to you in October and November. So I do just want to quickly go through them. There's just a few so that you're aware and you know what's coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So this item, like I said, is a preview item to those items regarding the Tax Appraisal District Board of Directors. So a little bit of background. The City of Colleen was previously able to unilaterally appoint one member to the Tax Appraisal Board. There were no elected members. Now, under the new regulations, Tax Appraisal Board will be made up of the elected tax assessor-collector, three members that are elected by voters, and then five members appointed by taxing entity election, with two or three of those directors being elected each year. So two are going to be elected this year for a term beginning January 1, 2026. So the process is that all taxing entities will nominate up to two candidates before October 15th of this year. The appraisal district will send out a ballot to taxing entities that includes all nominations. And each entity receives a certain percentage of the 2,000 votes based off the percentage of the total tax levy. So we'll have 218 of the 2,000 total votes. Once the city receives the ballot with all the nominations, the city will be required to adopt a resolution with its vote by the second meeting after receiving the ballot. So those next steps, October 7th, so at your, your meeting on October 7th, we'll have a resolution for you to nominate up to two candidates for the Bell County Tax Appraisal District of Bell County Board of Directors. So we'll need one to two names to nominate to the board. And then, once we get that ballot, November 18th, 2025, the resolution, it'll come back to you to submit city's, city's final votes. That's the 218 votes. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Counsel, last year, we had Penny Wales, and he didn't get enough votes to be appointed? It's not us, it's much higher. It's, it's, I, I will go in detail, but it would take too long to explain it. So if you have anybody that you want to put on there, we don't vote, we just put them on there, then it's another process to vote, which, yeah. Yeah, yes. Any questions for the City Attorney? All righty.
Yes, I do-
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask, is it possible that we could consolidate or find out what the other entities are doing in the area such as KIST? And maybe join with them so we could have a more of a pool of votes?
You can, it, it's not a consolidation, formal consolidation, but you can have those conversations with the other entities to determine if you want to pool your votes together.
So how would that work in, in proceeding with that? Would y'all engage with some of the other entities? Would the staff engage?
Counsel can or the staff if, if that's a directive. But if not, counsel can talk to them too. But first, we have to have a person that wants to do it. And then, once you find out who that person is, if you bring somebody, maybe you can talk to one of the board members and ask them would they support that individual. And, and the counsel, we also can go and ask them as individuals. That's one way. The other way, which I think it should be us, but hey, that's just my opinion, the directive can be from the counsel to tell staff to do something that I think we can do. But they don't have to. But that, that's an option.
What are some of the, besides KIST, there are other entities, organizations?
All of the taxing entities in Bell County. I can, I do have, I can pull a list of all of those if you'd like me to send an email out to, to that.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, madam.
Oh, no, we want to answer your questions because you seem very interested and we will be more than happy. Is this a nomination? Councilwoman Cobb? Because it's coming back. Yes, ma'am, please. The floor is yours.
No, ma'am. Before we went into our executive session, I was hoping that you would allow me two minutes to say something.
The reason I'm saying no because that's not the agenda item. You, you had your opportunity on a item, but just to say, yeah. So it's very hard to clean it up. That's why it's best for us just not, we don't react. Yes. Yes, ma'am, I do understand. But, but ma'am, ma'am? You're off the agenda. Councilwoman Cobb. We are now going to DS dash twenty-five dash zero four six. Receive an update date on pending litigations pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Law, Government Code 551.001. The mayor now calls a closed meeting of the- The mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 16th day of September 2025 at 5:51 PM under the following authority, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. The city attorney will consult with legal counsel. The city council will consult with legal counsel to receive an update on pending litigation. Agenda item DS-25-046. The council will now go in closed session. All right. Let me get my agenda for the next meeting. Oh, let me finish this up. Ms. Councilwoman, would you pass that through your time? Thank you. Councilwoman Cobb. Is it 7:30? And we're gonna call our special city council meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present except Councilmember Segarra and-
Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I believe we need a few moments to-
Oh, did, I'm sorry. I didn't do the thumbs up. I'm sorry. Okay, that did not count. Okay, adjourned on that one. I gotta call them back to order because we're not ready. Ms. Tiffany, you ran up here like-